Alright, everybody. Welcome to another edition of the Leadership Blend with your host Ricardo Rice and my co-host.
Simone Sherry.
Alright, so it's been about two weeks and it feels weird because I'm used to us being here every Friday. So it really feels really weird that we took a, you know, holiday break.
Yeah.
And it's like, but we need rest too, which I don't, I didn't get any, but you know, maybe Simone did. I didn't get any rest, but you know, maybe she did. But we're back and God knows there's enough going on in the world that I can't even, so I'm not gonna waste any more time. Alright, so in the studio today, we have two guests, one of which makes me very excited because you know, when you have family members and stuff and you know, they can share in what you do. It makes you feel real good. So today, I'm gonna let him introduce himself in a few minutes, but this is, and I'm gonna say, because I told you I was gonna say, this is my little cousin. And he's, you tell him, I'm not even gonna tell you, tell him, tell him about you.
Well, my name is Cameron Wallace. I'm a senior at Clemson University, majoring in political science and minoring in sociology and psychology. I am here at the Leadership Blend with Simone and Ricardo and our commissioner, the new commissioner of Cobb County. And I am just excited to be here, decided to be in a space with like-minded individuals, individuals where I can, you know, have an intellectual conversation and also, you know, push my agenda of one day, of, you know, creating a media outlet that just provides nonpartisan and non-biased, you know, news and politics to people. So this is just.
And we need your perspective, Cameron, as we continue to age and our.
Whoa, I don't, whoa, wait a minute.
You always remind me of this.
Wait a minute, as we continue to age, no, 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 I made a deal with the devil. I'm gonna say young forever now. You can age. I'm good.
No pressure to speak for a generation, but that's gonna be helpful, so.
I'm so over you. I'm actually doing a bus. I meant to say something. You made me forget what I was gonna say. I was gonna say something about Cameron before we moved on, but I forgot what it was now. Oh, I'm actually proud of you for not saying Ricky, because that's, my family calls me Ricky. So I thought about, which I wouldn't say anything. I thought about Shuie's gonna say Ricky, because my family, most of my only thing to even know my real name is Ricardo, because everybody calls me Ricky. So I'm proud of you for doing that, but you didn't have to, but it's fine. Alright, so our actual guest guest is a part of that wave that swept through Cobb County. And we had Flynn Brody on with us about two weeks ago, but he's a friend to the show. He's been here when he ran for senate. But I'm so honored to have this guest here with us today, so I'm letting her introduce herself.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm Jerica Richardson, the new commissioner for Cobb County, as Cameron mentioned a second ago.
I know, I didn't mean for him to do that, but okay.
No, no, it's good. It's good. It's like drum roll. No, I'm just very, very excited about all the potential, all of the opportunity. I mean, when I got sworn in, part of my speech, it was, anytime you have a historical moment, it's that opportunity to recalibrate, to reflect.
For sure.
And to come out setting a real standard. And oh my gosh, Cobb County, I mean, we, we made so much history.
I was, I'm still blown, I'm still blown away. It's like.
And continue to make it.
Mm-hmm.
Literally.
And continue to make it.
Flynn was the one who pointed out that it was all female.
That's right.
Which I did not understand. And I know different counties have different compositions, but I, and I knew that there was, that there was lots of black women. I saw that there was kind of a democratic sweep over some of the judicial offices, but I did, I just didn't realize, yes, these are all women.
Not to mention, our county manager is also female.
That's right, Lisa Cupid.
The, the chair and the manager.
Oh, the manager. Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I didn't know that.
So we've had a full, it's, it's female power right now.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's not getting excited, you know, yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's cool.
So we're gonna talk about, go ahead. I was gonna say hot topic, right?
Run down, run down. What's on the rundown?
Yeah, so we wanna ask a lot more about a county commission. We, we try to be a little educational as much as we can, and people definitely need to understand the significance of this office and what that means on a county level, even though, again, there's 159 counties in Georgia. I think that there will be a lot of applicability as we get into that. But we're gonna start with some of the day's news, day's news. It feels like the century's news.
I feel like this week has been a lifetime, like this week alone.
Yep.
Forget everything that's happened in the last four years, because God knows there's been a lot. This week alone, I feel like I've lived two lifetimes, like just seeing what we saw. But I don't, just carry on, carry on.
It's been, it's been crazy seeing different generations respond to this too. People who just swore they would never see it. My, my brother served in the early 90s and was just saying, he never ever thought that he would see something like this happen here. And there's been a, now that, now that it's been a couple of days, and I think people had a chance to reflect a little bit, I think you're seeing like, there was so much smugness. And the idea that we've had to say like, this isn't, this isn't America. This doesn't happen here, like in comparing, comparing ourselves to all these other countries, where clearly it does. You know, clearly, clearly this can happen absolutely anywhere. Democracy is not iron tight. America is not infallible, so.
We've hit a new low.
Yeah, well, so let's start with that, because the, the flag is flying at half-staff today at the US Capitol. The FBI and others are offering rewards to identify some of the folks who are responsible for pipe bombs. I think we learned the same day, or at least within 24 hours, that there was also pythons left behind.
I thought you were joking. I didn't know that was a real thing.
No, two pythons.
What?
Yes, and those honors, I don't believe have been identified yet, but there's, their, the Capitol was, was ransacked. Capitol building was ransacked. If you know any staff, or if you saw anything on Twitter, which was actually very quick. It was very hard to watch traditional media as this was going on, because you knew that you could get, see some live feeds on social media. But I saw staffers, you know, crouched under tables, like, I felt like, like an elementary school fire drill. I can't think of the last time I was crouched under a table. It was insane to see. And one of the representatives, I believe it went from Arkansas, just, you know, broke out into prayers. They were beating down those doors. It was a very intense scene and a very intense moment, and it took them hours and hours and hours to clear out, I think, the last of, of the mob. There's so many different adjectives. I'm really trying to be careful here.
Oh, I'm glad you are, because I was getting ready to say, that's why I was gonna let you find the word. I had one, but I.
Please, please, because I'm still not quite.
The debris, the, the trash, that, let's just call it what it is. I'm not gonna miss words today. You know, as an American first, I was, was floored, shut up. I was floored at the fact that this happened. To watch almost our democracy fold on itself was shocking. As an African-American, I was disgusted that not only were you able to breach the walls, you got into the corridors, you went down the hall to the chamber, you sat behind the speaker's desk, you talked on the microphone, then you got your buddies to go down the hall, or wherever it is, to Nancy Pelosi's office, you kick your feet up on her desk, you, I forgot what he said.
Hung a Confederate flag.
Hung a Confederate flag, you tore stuff off her wall, took her mail, then you left the building, went on social media, bragged about how you did it, and you're still free. And you're still allowed to tell the story. As an African-American, I was disturbed by that.
True.
I was disturbed by that.
I don't know if you guys have been, I've, I've seen pretty universal agreement about that, about the treatment and the disparities of the treatment. I think that that's been one of the clearest points that have come out of this, is that they were definitely prepared for Black Lives Matter. They were.
They were over-prepared. They were over-prepared.
Absolutely, from, from a distance. And it was so crazy to see these people with their Blue Lives Matter hats on and their Back the Blue shirts on punching down police. It was the most ironic, ridiculous thing I think I've absolutely ever seen. They had staff holding.
Was them climbing, scaling the walls.
Yeah.
And breaking windows, like, I'm sitting here and.
Did you see the food stand? Like, this was, so here's what's so funny about this. There was a, there was a food stand.
I heard about it, but I didn't see it. I heard about it.
It was the most prepared outside of the building, a big yellow tent where they're passing out water bottles and passing out homemade, probably homemade sandwiches. I don't know. But it was, it was crazy to me to imagine that they didn't know this was, because the staff was teleworking. So I, they, someone knew something. They were organizing this on Parler and one of those alternative social media sites. I know that this was not just a total.
Let's be very clear.
They just completely underestimated.
You're not, I don't think it's a matter of underestimating, because when I was listening, you know, I love the view. So when I was listening to them, I think Whoopi was saying that the president controls the National Guard. So the fact that you did not make that call at any point throughout the day, oh, this, forget preparedness, this was a tactic. You intentionally did this, and before that, they showed him on the podium saying, we're gonna march, you know, down to the Capitol. So.
We, and he said we.
We, and he was like, I'm gonna be with you. So.
Right.
You're not gonna, at this point, and I'm gonna be very honest, you know, I sat on the sidelines and was like, well, you know, my friends are like, oh, you know, if you side with Trump, you know, I'm gonna unfriend you. And I've never taken that, that stance. This time, I literally said and was like, I want to see one person out of my friends' list defend this behavior. One, I'm, it'll let, I remember names and faces. So the answer is you try to make an excuse for this unpatriotic behavior, forget race, forget unpatriotic behavior as adults. If you can rationalize behavior, we have nothing else to talk about. You shouldn't even be in my community. There's no rationalizing this.
I'm gonna just say, it was domestic terrorism.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
If, if you can just envision a foreign country doing the same thing, that's what we're talking about.
Oh, no, no, we're talking about third world countries. You know, that's the favorite phrase they use, a third world country.
I'm saying to come to our soil and do that kind of, to, to, to execute on that kind of plan, because we don't know who was in that crowd.
Literally.
It could have been international. It could have been terrorism on that front, and it would have been a plan executed almost flawlessly. Because however it was, for, for our federal government not to have everything put in place, it is embarrassing. To the fact that the vice president had to make the call for the National Guard to come in, when he doesn't even have the authority to do so. What does that say about our systems of checks and balances?
Okay.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
What does that say about the protection offered? This was our US Capitol. These are senators and US House reps, and I'm not saying that we should have persons that are above other persons. But without that, this entire country has no operations.
Literally.
It is a, it is a system, the reason they're protected or moved into bunkers and is because of protocol. It's because without that protocol, all kinds of other things break down. You saw when the, I believe it was the Maryland governor, who had to make that call to send in his specially trained people.
Yeah, you were talking about with the Michigan, it was the same, yeah, the pro, uh-huh.
Similar, and so the fact.
They did the same thing.
That there was no one to authorize it, because protocol broke down.
And let's not forget, they were in session. So they didn't just randomly do this. They were in session to ratify the Electoral College votes. So they were literally in the process of doing that, which is why they did it. I, I just, I can't, I can't wrap my head, and then they showed pictures of them being in the chamber. And like, I think it was like some police people with guns aimed at this individual. I'm just like, and you live to tell about it. That's the part that kills me.
And I think nobody really is expecting, like, you know, for police to like respond in any brutal way towards them. I think people are just more upset at the fact that like, at the African-American community should not be, you know, should not have this response of violence towards them. And then, you know, this clear act of insurrection and domestic violence happens and they don't receive the same treatment. Like, no one wants that, this to happen. No one wants police brutality, no one wants violence, but it's just like, at the end of the day, this was displayed for a much larger agenda, like there, you know, when the Black Lives Matter protests and everything was going on, like, police responded in a very brutal way, and then this happens, and this is clear domestic terrorism, and it's just like, we see no action on anybody's part, really, except for Pence.
You saw selfies.
Absolutely.
You saw selfies. Yeah, I, I, I will say though, the one statement I made on this as a result is what we witnessed, there are so many different things to talk about.
Literally.
But at the end of the day, what we're witnessing is just how deep the divide and hurt.
For sure.
And division and disinformation is, just how much healing we have to do.
Yeah.
Because we are going to turn, we are opening up a new chapter right now.
Literally.
We're in the process of it. And so witnessing that, it's not like once you turn that page, it all goes away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We have to, especially as elected officials, now we have to be very intentional about how we begin to rebuild those bridges.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're.
Two Americas, three Americas, however many there are.
No, you're exactly right. I mean, and that's why leadership is so important. It's always important, especially right now. I think it's incredibly important. And I just, I feel like, you know, the response from, there, there's a difference between, we've talked about this before, people who are running for office and then actually governing. And I think we've said this so many different times, and how I think that there are people who are incredible elected officials and, or appointed officials, who are really good at governing, really good at public administration, public service, who do not make the most, you know, entertaining or, you know, inspiring campaigners. They don't. They're not necessarily competitive on a debate stage, but they are great people to have in those positions, and sometimes the opposite is true. And, you know, you've got somebody like Donald Trump, who just, since he's taken office, has always spoken to his base, has always been campaigning, has been talking about a second term since the first week of his first term, who has always had this attitude of, you know, almost as though this is a television show or a minimum, a contest or a competition.
Or both.
And before all of this happened, it took this to happen for him to concede, for him to even speak about having some sort of a safe transition or seamless transition. It took, took all of this, because 24 hours prior, well, well.
He still hasn't conceded. Let's be very clear.
He preemptively said, on the 20th, I will.
Yeah, but then he also apparently said today, well, I won't be there. So, you know, I'm, I'm not coming. But I mean, my thing is at this point, did anybody expect him to?
Well, his sons, his sons, like, so, so this, and this is the same day, I think, but the quote was, have some backbone, show some fight. This is what Eric Trump had said. We need to march on the Capitol today. We need to learn from Donald Trump, stand up for what's right. Like, this is literal insight. It's literal incitement, which is why I'm so glad that Mark Zuckerberg, among other people, blocked that video.
Oh, my God, here we go. Jerica, I'm gonna apologize upfront about her, her beliefs with all these billionaires between Jeff Bezos.
I'm a tech optimist.
That's what you calling it?
Yes, I'm a tech optimist.
Wow, okay, that's what you calling it.
But that said, I, I wish they had done so many, many, many years ago. And, and for all these, for so many conservatives to have been so frustrated with traditional social media, this is the first time I've ever seen Donald Trump blocked and put in suspension for a significant amount of time. It could have, could have happened many, 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 many times ago. And I remember on CNN, they were kind of discussing this, well, how are we gonna hear from him? It's like, like a traditional press conference is just not a thing anymore. Like, people kind of panicking, like, what are we gonna, how are we gonna know what he's doing?
I think my, the scariest thought for me is, because you know, I do organizational leadership, that's kind of what I do. The, my fears of a charismatic leader. You know, we talk about Hitler, who was able to almost complete genocide a whole race of people. And people go, how do you do it? This is how it happens. Like, you watch these people, they feel, they're entertaining, they're fun, but then they say stuff that sticks with a group of people. And these group of people become diehard individuals that'll do anything for this individual. And, you know, we watched it, everybody kind of talked about on the sidelines, like, huh, those, those MAGA people, they crazy, they crazy. Now, everybody's like, no, 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 they're really crazy. Like, they literally just stormed the Capitol. They're really crazy, like, yeah, but now there's like two weeks left. What is gonna happen in these two, like, I think everybody's now like, okay, they have no boundaries. So what happens in these last two weeks?
Yeah.
Amendment 25. Do you have that? Like, what is, people keep saying amendment 25. What is amendment 25?
So Vice President Pence, this would be the vice president's basically stepping up to the plate to, to ta, to take over. Because for, for a while, people believed that President Trump had absconded from his post, and they were just like, well, like, where is he? Like, we don't, we don't know if he's going to spend the next 12 days here. There was resignations left and right. Chief Education Secretary, your favorite person.
Good riddance to old trash. Goodbye to votes. I'm, yes, I said it. Everybody know how I feel about it. Goodbye to votes. You know, get, actually, I'm, I'm really disappointed, because I was waiting for them to drag her out by her hair kicking and screaming. Because what she's done to student loan debt and things of that, and for profit institutions, what she has allowed and what she rolled back to allow them to get away with.
I know.
Goodbye to trash.
Saying that's criminal for a long time.
Yes, it's criminal. She's, I want her to go to jail. So she got off easy, but I digress.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jerica. I feel very strongly about that. My student loans were on that. I feel very strongly about what she did. What she allowed from nonprofit, I mean, for-profit institutions, and what she didn't do for student loan people who were taking advantage of predatory behavior by the for-profit institutions. So goodbye to hot trash. Karen, I'm sorry, Karen.
No, no, it's okay. It's, it's, it's just what I said. It's just the removal, whether it's by death or resignation, the vice president becoming the president.
I didn't say death, Jesus.
Well, that's.
I'm not opposed to it, but I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
So, but there's 12, there's 12 days left. There was a conversation I heard about whether or not we need a president for 12 days. I think most people, I, I believe we absolutely, let's not play that game. Please, let's not play that game. And, but he is not, he is not absconded. He was found, I guess, if he was missing. So Nancy Pelosi, the House Speaker, has talked about whether or not they will pursue impeachment again.
Somebody drew up the paperwork. I forgot her name. One of the senators, she did draw up the impeachment papers.
But it's a long process. We have to keep that in mind.
There lies in my point. I'm just like, here we go again with this. Like, he has 12 days left. The only reason I would say they could push it, push it is because if, I think if they did it, he can't run again. That's the only good side I saw about it. They actually did it. He wouldn't be able to run again, from what I read.
And, okay, well.
I guess if he's literally impeached, then he can't run again.
So here, here's the first thing that I'm thinking about as far as that goes. We don't know exactly what the next 12 days would look like, but in terms of just the, the investigation that's currently going on, there's, there's a few unanswered questions here. There's a question about pardon power, right? Because that's still a power that the president has. And so one of the biggest questions and something I think a lot of people, or at least Democratic strategists, were speculating about is, would this man, would he resign only to turn around and ask for a pardon? While he's in power, would he grant pardons to everyone who was responsible?
That's my next, because those would be federal crimes. So he could actually issue pardons. That was my next thing.
And legally speaking, there are a couple of open questions, just because there's no, there's not a lot of precedent, but legally speaking, he, he has the power to do really all of, of those things. And President, or Vice President Pence, who has been, you know, lock and step this entire time, has only very, very recently, you know, in wake of this violence, done anything, been even so much as slapped on the hand, at least by Donald Trump, kind of saying that, you know, Pence didn't step up and do what he was supposed to do. So I, I don't, I think a lot of it is gonna depend on where the hearts and minds of these people are, where Pence's focus is and what it's gonna be on. And how much he would really have to, he, if he championed this, if this was something he really felt passionately about, I think that we would see it happen. I just don't know that that's the case. He spent a long time trying to be a little more behind the scenes, and I just don't imagine that in the last 12 days that that is going to, I don't see that changing so much.
I, I, I think the, the thing for me is, like, you guys, you rode this train until it got to this station, and when you got to the station, the station's in flames, it's going down. I'm like, and, and, but you guys enabled him for four years, and now we're at this point, and all of you guys are going, oh, my God, what have I attached myself to? Like, you didn't recognize this the last three and a half years, when y'all were enabling him and he was doing all these crazy things?
Look, this is called brand management.
Hmm.
That's a good way to put it.
Got 12 days. This is the safe spot. This is safe space. I can distance myself and not get any kind of blowback, because everybody's upset.
This is true. This, this, when you think about it, that is true. Like, this is the perfect opportunity for them to jump ship and say, oh, my God, I didn't realize he was this far gone until this event happened. I'm getting off ship. Yeah.
Yeah, all this, all the resignations. I, I was very kind of, you know, people tried to make, I was like, you know, it's 12 days. I mean, if you, if you put in your two weeks, how often do people stay throughout their two weeks?
Literally.
So, but go, I'm sorry.
I didn't say, like, thank goodness they are hopping off the train at this point in time.
Yeah, but can he appoint people though in their places, though? That's the other part. Like, can he put people in those positions for those last 12 days?
That's always been the justification for why they didn't resign before, is the next person they bring in, just like he has a lot of acting directors now. The next person that he brings in, are they gonna be even more, you know, at least I can curb it a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
It's always been the justification. It's just, you know, it, it's kind of that, it takes everyone to say no in order for it to work. And if you have those loose, you know, any opportunists in that group.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't work. And so no one, they, they couldn't combine, they couldn't unite on that, so they all just said, well, fine, I guess we'll just play our role.
Yeah. I think what we, what's gonna be really interesting to see over the next couple of months is what happens to the GOP, what happens to the, to the Republican Party, that is. In Georgia, there's been so much division for the last couple of months since this election happened, between, you know, the Republicans that we, we've elected here, between, you know, our governor and our secretary of state, and, and even our, really between our statewide and our federal officials. Because, you know, for, for Kelly Loeffler, who lost her race, for David Perdue, who lost his race. You know, the, the kind of lock and step condemnation of people who we've elected to statewide office has not really sat. That's been the biggest sticking point, I think, since Trump's been elected, is that in Georgia, we really care about Georgia. We don't really care what you have going on up there, over there, or in DC. And it, it is very, very, very much a no-no that you tell us what to do or how to do it in terms of being like a statewide Republican and statewide conservative. So that has been a big point of friction, and it's only continued since this phone call came out, that, the hour-long phone call, which now feels like less and less of a, I guess, an issue, because we've, the Electoral College has done its job, the Congress has done their job, working into the wee hours to do it, to solidify the election is, is what it is. And it's, we have a 46th president, and that's it. But at the time, that phone call was pretty big entertainment for me to start off 2021.
You gotta give it to President Trump. He's persistent.
He is very persistent.
He has no shame.
He has exhausted every possible route, both legal and illegal.
I mean.
You call.
To try to make this happen.
You call him and say, hey, I just need 11,000 votes. You can't find that. Not, not 200, not 20.
Well, he went through the whole list of opportunities where there may be some opportunities.
Yes, he said, so we've got a couple of, oh, my God.
11, not 20, not 200.
And what he did not say was, listen, there, we won the state by landslide. I'm not even asking you to find every vote of mine, which I, which he felt like he could. I'm just asking you to find 11,780 of my votes, and you've got ample opportunity.
I promise, I promise you all, I believe that he believes.
I do. I do.
I believe he genuinely called and said, now, I know this isn't real, so.
Yeah.
So somewhere, I mean, look, you've got this, you've got this, you've got this, somewhere in there.
What's so funny about that phone call is you had his.
It's not 200. Like, it's not even 200. I can see if he said, hey, you know, can you find the 200 votes? 11,000 votes. He just expects you to miraculously find under the chair in, in the Capitol building in Georgia or something.
They're right in a truck somewhere, but.
Oh, my God, I can't.
So he, there was a lot of different claims in that phone call. If you haven't had a chance to listen to it, it's, I mean, it's been made publicly available for a while now, with a couple of names. Oh, oh, yeah, twice, I think.
You're such a nerd.
Well, he was concerned about the people that lived here, left here, and that would move back, because who would?
So that was another thing. Right. And so he thought that, he said there's out-of-state votes. He said that there are deceased votes. He was saying that there are votes that, he, he obviously cited a couple of people who were, who were working within the Fulton County Elections Office as being responsible for fraud. He also blamed the voting machines themselves, which is, there's another piece of news about as well. Lots of different areas.
The funny part is, you know, your homeboy Kemp, before he left, he did all the purging. So he made sure all that was.
Well, that's no longer his homeboy.
He made sure all that was done before he left.
In this phone call, he called our governor, everything but a child of God, said that, he, so his words were, I ran against Stacey Abrams in 2018. And he said, Trump said, I beat her. He said, because Kemp was dead in the water. He was dead as a doornail. He was done. I, I ran against Stacey Abrams. And what a schmuck I was, he said, I think it was the quote, for, for, for trying to win that race, for winning that race for our governor, is what he essentially said. Which is that, telling that man that he did not earn his own seat. And then he said, you know, Stacey's got it next. He said, Stacey is laughing behind your back right now. Do you know how much, how much entertainment Stacey was getting? I mean, he was literally talking to him like, I'm trying to just think of like the best. I don't know if I was watching Mean Girls, if I was listening to like somebody who thought they were a mob boss, like, saying like, listen, listen, what are we gonna do here, guys? Like, come on, like, you know what I know.
What got me, though, is they're like, oh, he's strong-arming. And I'm like, I get, I get that, I get that's what he's doing, but if that's strong-arming, like, that's really, that's the negotiation scheme.
They're like, I'm like, strong-arm, but hey, find these votes, I'm done with it. Like, he was like, yeah, you know, well, we really did win, and, you know, I know you can find these 11,000 votes. They're, they're somewhere. Look at the desk.
Everyone around Georgia.
It was kind of sweet.
Sweet?
It was just not.
That is not the word I was looking for, Jerica, but okay.
It just wasn't convincing. It wasn't convincing. Like, if you read The Art of the, I read The Art of the Deal when it first came out, and I've read it since. And you just get this, I mean, the impression, the narrative, the brand, like you said, is that this is a, a compelling, inspiring, if you're in the same room with this man, you are won over by this man. And when I listen to that phone call, and I just hear our secretary of state and his legal counsel on the, on the other, Ryan Germany on the other end, they're like, no.
Literally, it's like, like, literally like.
They get this long question, no.
It said, Mr. President, your facts are just wrong.
Wrong, yeah. Yeah, it's just that simple. Anytime somebody on his camp tried to make a more intelligible argument that may, that, you know, like, well, can you just release the data? Can you release this information? Can we, he would just interject with something like, listen, we don't even need to do that, because I don't even need you to find all the problems. I just need you. So it was almost like he didn't want the conversation to even be, I mean, slightly intelligible. Like, that was, he just wasn't even trying to.
I'm done with it. Okay, so we will be here all day, because God knows it isn't enough. So we, we gonna shift over to why we, to the real business today. So we're gonna slide it over to Mrs. Jerica Richardson, and we're gonna start at ground zero. So tell us what a commissioner does.
Okay, so when you think about county operations, it's your day-to-day life. It's, it's, it's how you get around from one place to another. It's when you turn on the faucet and you expect the water to come out.
It better. Like, I have to take a bath. I don't.
Yeah, when you, when you turn the light switch on, you expect the light to, to show up, you know? It, it, but it's also, so I usually just kind of go down the list, because the list is so exhaustive, but policing, fire, power, water, air, soil, economic development, housing, land use, affordable housing, economic development, transportation.
Wait, these are all things that under your prepping?
Yes, transportation, property taxes, zoning.
And you wanted this job?
I know, right?
And you wanted this job?
I know. Well, it was honestly, and I'll, I'll finish the list, but that's what inspired me. I read through Georgia Code, and I saw the scope of the job, and I said, oh, we can make a real change.
Oh, for sure.
We can have real impact, because this is what enables people to live, work, play, grow, have legacy. Everything that you think of when you talk about community, this is the enablement right here, and it's the most unheard of, most powerful seat.
Agreed.
That is accessible to you. It's your first line of defense when it comes to all of these other things going on in the country. And so let's continue with the list.
God, there's more?
911, emergency services, disaster recovery, there's another big one, all the parks and libraries. And, yeah, I mean, the list just keeps going on, frankly.
Jesus, what?
So when you are talking to your commissioner, when you're trying to figure out who, what, who can help me with this issue, your commissioner is probably your best bet to go to, and if it doesn't fall under the purview of the commissioner, there's a phone call away from me to talk to our state legislature.
For sure.
Or a city or a municipal level, or federal, if it, if it, if it goes to that point. Oh, dissemination of federal grants. So we talk about the CARES Act. When you talk about some of these block grants with housing and urban development, guess who disseminates that in conjunction?
Seriously?
Seriously. Public health, administering all those things. Now, it is, there is still a system of checks and balances, okay? But that falls under the purview. We work with all of those departments. And when I mentioned the county manager earlier, so, there, in Cobb County, now get this, you know how you're used to the, the Congress, right, or 100 senators, or, or state legisl, there's just so many people that you have to finagle in order to get something done. There are five county commissioners in Cobb County.
That's what I was wondering. So how are y'all debbie'd up? So it's like, one person's over Marietta and.
How does that work?
So, so the lines change. That's where the state legislature comes in, because every time the census comes around, they redraw those lines.
Or some Jerry Mandering dependence. If we wanna be real about it, Jerry Mandering.
Absolutely, and they do. Absolutely, and they do some off, you know, off census years too as well. Um, so that's why the state legislature, being in the situation that it's in now, is something that you wanna keep an eye on, because that will impact all of these local districts that you're looking at. Uh, but yeah, so in Cobb County, we have five, uh, there are four districts and there's one chair, and the chair is countywide. And each of the districts are individually representing their respective districts. Now, they're representing, but the same way that if a bill goes through the state legislature, all of the vote on that, and it impacts state law. In our case, we're all equal votes. Now, the county manager has a lot more boards where she can appoint people to those boards. She has the ability, and I'm saying she, doesn't that feel good?
Oh god, we talking about this, we understand the girl power thing, keep it cute, Jerica, keep it cute.
I am, really cute. Um, she has the ability to assign the agenda, to set the agenda, um, and, and really just work with all the departments. But that's the idea, is that it's a, it's a team, it's truly a team, but majority vote is three.
So is it commissioners and then the city, uh, manager, or is it commissioners then the city manager? How, what does that look like? Is all that equal, or?
So cities, so.
Well, the county manager.
I mean, county manager.
Okay, yes.
County manager, sorry.
So the, so the five commissioners, that we have to agree on appointing a county manager.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So that is our appointment as a board, and the county manager is then able to hire o, other people.
Gotcha.
To, to work under, for each department, each department and each division, and agencies, depending on how she wants to set up that organization.
For sure.
So as commissioners, when issues, when budget items, and that's our biggest thing, right, so I listed all of those items. The reason why that falls under our purview is because we have to write the checks.
Oh, okay.
We have to write checks, we have to sign the checks, and we have to approve things as they come to the board, um, so.
Can I ask you, because you, you were gonna, you were talking about what kind of inspired you, and I'd like you to get a little bit deeper into that, because I don't know how many people know your background, but if you could talk about more about your background, in terms of, yeah, how it inspired you or why?
Who is Jerica?
Yes, yes, why in public service?
Outside a commissioner, who was Jerica?
I mean, I still know you.
No, after that list you just rattled off, you won't be.
I'm gonna tell you a, 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 a little thing that people probably don't know either, by law, the commission role is noted as a part-time job.
That's not possible.
So like our legislature, state legislature?
Exactly, you're still considered, uh, you know, this is not your full-time thing.
With all that stuff you just rattled off, how are you, you know, continue, just continue, I can't, I'm not even, I'm not going to contain that, they just carry on.
So, background-wise, I'm originally from New Orleans, I came up in two thousand five with the hurricane, um, it was quite the experience, and that became that my, my story, my, a part of my platform for when I ran for office. Um, so I ran on the platform of connecting Cobb, having a connected Cobb, right? So everyone that lives in Cobb is a different experience, depending on where you live, how you live, why, all of those.
Let's be clear, let's be very clear, we said this in print, was black folks are scared of Cobb. I'm not, I lived there, I love it, it's the truth, if you ask any African-American, you know this is what I do, we're honest. Most of them don't come to Cobb, because the, the reality is Cobb is like a compound. You know, when you come to Cobb, you call the police, they're there in two seconds, uh, you know, this, I just moved to Stone Mountain.
Appreciate, let's keep that going, let's keep that going.
I mean, I don't live there anymore, but you know, this sucks, as somebody that moved to another county, I miss Cobb, because I, I immediately saw the difference in the things that I saw in Cobb, I would have never seen in Cobb versus where I live currently. Like, I, and my friends, I want you to shut up about it now, because y'all used to live there too. Like, the stuff that I see now where I live versus what I did not see in Cobb, it's, it's a whole night and day thing, so, but I can address.
I will say Cobb is an incredible, I mean, the staff is incredible, and, and to a certain extent, there's a lot of bad rap. Okay, so I have personal experience on the other side as well, but I will say, over the years, there have been incremental steps along the way, but those steps haven't necessarily been communicated outward.
Sure.
So, the, the stigmas didn't necessarily fall to the side, they didn't change.
They didn't change.
Right, because that transparency piece was still missing slash, um, our county workers are, for, for, I will tell you, compared to other co, counties our size, we're operating off of about sixty-seven percent, funding-wise.
Yeah.
Off of what our county should be operating off of in terms of its size.
You would never know.
Exactly, that is a testament to all the people that work for the county, but there's no one that really sings their praises in an outward manner. So that's one of the things that I wanted to, to bring, you know, from a, from a representation standpoint to the community, is building that trust and that relationship, because we should be able to critique when we need to critique, but praise, when it's time to praise.
Especially if it's based off the knowledge, like, I would have never known they were operating at that capacity, because, like I said, versus where I live now, I'm just like, bro, seriously? Like a DMV vis, something that's supposed to be a DMV visit, like, I went and was like, why is it this? I was like, when I sit, lived in Cobb, I never had this problem, like, the tag place, it's a five-hour process where I live now. I'm like, when I went to Cobb, I was in and out, like, are you kidding me?
Without getting too high-level, I feel like government is, is catching up to the idea that communications is not auxiliary, or it's not a, a bonus. It's kind of necessary, because what happens when things go wrong, is that people are like, what the heck is going on with this place? And so, and there's been no consistent or ongoing external communication, so elections too are a, a really big, this is why this came up in my mind, is because the Board of Elections, Fulton County in particular, now has all this spotlight and all this attention on it, and they've been there, and, you know, they've got like a little one-two-person, you know, communications team who tries, you know, advertise what they're doing around the county, but never centers on elections, and now all of a sudden, people have all these questions that I'm sure, you know, there are easy answers to, but that they just, when something goes wrong.
That's right, that's right, and, and I, my thing is, is if, if you wait until when something goes wrong.
You're already behind the goal.
Right, right, you, there, there's a disconnect, you've got people asking, is, there's disinformation, it's too late. And, 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 you know, sometimes people are afraid of the idea of controlling the narrative, but it's more so of like, making sure that the narrative is correct.
Literally.
That's true.
Making sure that it's accurate, um, and, and, because I think that people make the best decisions they have, they can make off of the information that they have. And so if you don't equip the community, guess what? They can't make good decisions.
That's true.
And that goes to, um, so under the connecting Cobb platform, it was, there were three pillars that I had, it was empowerment, which goes towards that piece of communication, um, innovation, and live, work, play. And under each of those three pillars, there were a litany of, we can do this policy, we can do this ordinance, we can do this initiative, so on and so forth, that can really accelerate, um, what community means for Cobb County. Uh, but my ending statement was always to keep Cobb home for those that have yet to come, and for those that are already there.
Right.
Um, so, so just kind of back to my backstory. So being from New Orleans, came up here with, with the hurricane, we lived in the hotels, went to go pick our Christmas presents off of the wall over, before Ponce was Ponce City Market, um, and, yeah, it was just, it was a rough time, and I remember, there was a lot of uncertainty and fear, and people say a lot of things when they're uncertain and fearful.
I'm sure.
Um, and there was a, there was one kind, there were a few silver linings though, because people, there were some people that responded in, in love and in hope, though. And, uh, matter of fact, my mom, uh, she had, she'd been working for a jo, a, a company down in New Orleans, but they had a branch up here. And so when we came up here, um, they adopted our family.
Oh, nice.
And they offered to pay a thousand dollars of rent for the first six months.
Oh, nice.
So that we could get re-acclimated into the community.
Wait, do you have siblings?
Two, two brothers.
Yeah, male power, yeah, yeah, brothers.
Hey, amen.
Wait, older or younger?
They're younger, but amen, amen.
Some, let's get some brother power in here, yeah, some, yeah, a little testosterone, yeah.
I was gonna ask about your.
All of them are needed, go ahead.
Because you were, were you in the private, you were in the private sector before?
I still am, yeah.
Still, well, that's right, because it's part-time, so, so you still are, so, um, I know economic development is something that you mentioned, but I think, I love that background and that experience, I, not that you can't, you know, have a career in government forever, but a lot of people have a career in government forever, and I, I think, increasingly, people wanna know, like, what else have you seen and what else have you done, not like, did you go from this job to this job to this job, all within, you know, the context of government?
So where, where'd you go to school? Let's, let's go, that's, that's.
ABC stuff.
Georgia Tech. I'm a Yellowjacket and I'm a Ramlin wreck from Georgia Tech and a hell of an engineer.
Amen, amen.
Okay, so you, see, that, that engineering gives you that, like, break stuff and actually look at how it works? So that explains why, because, you know, somebody that does not have a legal background or interest in law would have not taken this kind of initiative, be like, you know what, this is this, and, I'll fly, I should be, so that makes sense to me, like, I, I, because that was my, I was like, why in the, the hell would she wanna do this when she doesn't have a background in law or anything like that? Not with the engineer mindset, is to break it and to really get into dissecting the pieces.
You need different perspectives.
This is very true.
That's true.
You need different perspectives coming into representation, um, you know, it doesn't matter if it's engineering, it doesn't matter if it's waitressing, it, it doesn't matter, you need different perspectives.
One of the things I was looking about at Cobb is that the median income was, I think, relatively high for Georgia. So what do you think some of Cobb's biggest challenges are?
Obviously, it, for, as I mentioned, connected Cobb is the disconnect, is that there's a huge divergence. And there are multiple Cobbs that people live in, in terms of surroundings, East Cobb, yep, yep, I, I, right now.
East Cobb is its own.
Black lifestyle, yeah, yeah.
And I represent East Cobb, part of East Cobb.
Oh, good, well, actually, that's, what, so, okay, so what is under your, what areas do you have?
I've got East Cobb up to Mabry, so in, in that corner, all the way in the right corner of, of Cobb County, but it includes all of that Avenue and Walton and Wheeler, and then all the way south to Vinings.
Oh.
And about half of Smyrna, and about two hundred thousand people.
Oh, you got the good air, the good sides, like that, I used to live in Vinings, you have the, the good side, so you have Marietta too then?
I have parts of Marietta.
Oh, yeah, see, that's where I used to, I used to live, uh, off Delk Road.
Yeah, Marietta's big.
So that's, that's where, that's right where I am.
Now I gotta move back, so I can, so I can give you a little hell, like, uh, Jerica, hey, hey.
But, so why did you move? Is housing something that people are talking about with Cobb?
No, I moved because I, I decided to move with my brother, and he lives in Stone Mountain, so I was like, this is, it's, and I, my move was good, because it happened right when COVID hit. So it was like, oh my god, thank god I did this, because, whoa, trying to fight, yeah, but I actually love where I live, because I lived in the same complex for, I moved in two thousand nine, lived in Vinings, and then moved to Marietta in twenty ten, and had lived there up until last year. I loved it, like, now I will say that the Braves, which, I think I witnessed, I don't wanna call it, uh, gentrification, but I kinda, I kinda did.
Development changes things, that's why I left Vinings, I was priced out, first of all, I, I wanted more space anyway. But it was getting increasingly expensive, and I thought, you know what, I could just move a little further.
Yeah, but Vinings is expensive anyway, I mean, but, to me, Vinings was expensive.
It, it was affordable for that, for me.
Well, Marietta is the one I feel like is suffering now, because the Braves stadium moved over, so now I feel like it swept everything, because even when I think about gentrification, which I hate to use that word, but it kinda was, when you think about, uh, uh, Delk was here, and then there was that other road, what was that other road that everybody said was so bad?
Johnson Ferry Road?
No, it's, it's.
Wait, bad?
It's, yeah, they said was so bad, what was the name of it? It's not Delk, it was the other road, ah, can't remember it, but it was, it was bad. No, it's not Powers Ferry, it's the other side.
Oh, Franklin.
Franklin, Franklin was, was, was pretty terrible, it was bad.
Now, that's, that's considered a community improvement district, that area.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it, because now there's like, uh, they knocked all those bad housing down, there's, uh, the soccer people, what is it called? The, the soccer, the big soccer thing, that they have the striped shirt, the cu, I can't remember the name of this stuff, I'm not a sports person. You still be able to jump in, Simone.
I watch football, I'm trying to follow.
Y'all know what I'm talking about, it's not UAC.
I sure don't.
Okay, any event.
Oh, you're talking about United.
Yeah, they, they have their practice field over there.
Atlanta United, we have Rugby ATL, and we have the Braves.
Oh, awesome.
They all took, Franklin is a whole different road, uh, now, so I was like, wow, they really like, well, it was, but it wasn't, because, you know, they kinda knocked those things down.
Well, I'm gonna say redevelopment and gentrification are just the two sides of the same coin.
I agree, I agree.
And so unless you are wisdomed about how you approach it.
Very strategic.
It can be terrible, it can be a terrible thing.
Yeah, it can, it can go either way, but that is the result, I mean, even, even what we, what you were referring to as kind of bad neighborhoods, that was also something that was put in and pushed someone else out. So, you have to look at, as time goes, how do you make wise choices, how do you make informed choices, how do you involve the community? And how do you protect the residents, as I mentioned, so that it stays home?
Yeah, I'd love to hear about your thoughts on transportation, because Cobb has been very good about minimizing the access to non-traditional public transportation.
You mean, Mark is a smart ass.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, okay, is this?
Well, because the CCT, so when I, link, right, so I, I mean, I would love to know kind of what you think about that.
Yeah, so, so I will say, there have been a lot of studies and analyses, you're looking at ridership, you're looking at who's using it, you're looking at, does it accommodate the subsidy of the cost and all that kind of stuff? So, those are concurrent things, discussions that are taking place. Now, what I propose, which is very similar to what a lot of the departments have put on paper as well, is a transitional plan.
Okay.
For what that looks like, outlining the different corridors, putting out some infrastructure that gets us partially there with a long-term goal of maybe some light rail or commuter rail somewhere, but as of today, if you were to put light rail there, the utility would not be what you need it to be.
I gotcha.
To accommodate the three hundred million dollar per mile cost price tag for it.
Woo!
Exactly.
They still reeling from the Braves.
That's about half of our annual general fund for one mile.
Geez, God almighty.
So.
That is huge.
Yes, a, and during the, uh, during Trump's administration, you saw huge cuts on, on the transportation subsidies, so you, you went from, it used to be eighty percent. It's not that anymore, so, eh, you have to figure out, what's the best, what can you do?
Right.
To get us there, and what do you, what can you build, so that you don't have to dig it all up and rebuild a whole new plan for your in-state? So that's the discussion, um, but no, I mean, uh, my biggest thing is, how do you, how do you move around the city? How do you make sure that we increase foot traffic around the county? Um, tho, those things are very, very important, and so the analysis that I have is, is it includes a BRT approach in the, in the, in the intermediary. Um, it includes long-term, some light rail and commuter rail, in the short term, I'm looking at trolley lines, um, connecting.
Oh, that'd be cute, that'd be cute. Well, if it's the Braves stadium, if it's the Braves stadium field, that's actually a good idea, that's, that's cute.
That was one of the things, you were like, transit, I was like, yeah, they, people don't have their weddings on buses, but they have their weddings on trolleys.
That's, that's some good thinking right there, all right, Ms. Richardson, that's some good thinking right there, I mean, Chris, that's some good thinking right there. All right, so let, let me ask you this, so what we're going into this, what we're, uh, actually, a birdie told me that you have a plan for like the next thirty years, that's, a birdie told me, I'm not gonna say that, but, it was like, he said like fifteen, fifteen, it was. It's past five, like, you have a plan past five years for this, this actual office.
I, I think he was exaggerating.
Just saying, he, he was like, you know, she, she's the woman, so I mean, so I guess that's my question, like, what is on your agenda going into this?
My thing is to have a plan that looks at the next twenty years, right? So they have the comp plans that are being, that, that the county does for twenty forty.
Okay.
And really making sure that we are building an accountability measures in there, meaning checkpoints, right? So we talk about a transition plan, that means that at, on at least annual basis, we should be coming together to, to, to calibrate, to, to redefine, to, you know, assess, right, all of that, so that we can move on to the next phase, or not. Maybe there's a change that needs to happen, and so what does that plan look like? Um, but no, I mean, there are, for, for, for twenty twenty-one, I can tell you, I have fourteen primary priorities.
Okay.
I'm looking to get in place, um, but, uh, before I get to that, we rolled out a cabinet. It's a community cabinet, there are twenty-six members in the community cabinet, and they all serve as liaisons, um, for, for different areas from.
Actually, wait, hold, hold that thought, hold that thought, before we do that, what are you equipped with? Like, what do they give you to do this job? Like, do you have five assistants? You, you wanna continue?
I have one assistant. I have an office.
That probably helps with the cabinet.
That, that, that's, that's it?
Yeah, but please, please go ahead, because that, is that the communication, they're gonna help fill in that communication gap?
They're gonna help with the communication gap, uh, making sure that we, but also with sourcing ideas and administering different initiatives, right? So one of the things that I would say on the campaign trail is not everything needs a vote. Some things you just need people, and you just need connections.
Okay.
So these cabinet members are meant to help with being a liaison to the community for their particular area, but also we meet on a monthly basis for them to propose ideas as a cabinet, I also propose ideas too. Um, and we assign those initiatives to those cabinet members, they create subcommittees, and they are focused on administering those, those particular initiatives. They have milestones and all that type of stuff, so as they complete things, we will announce that to the community, as they need things, we will ask for the community to plug in and volunteer. Uh, but it's really, uh, it's meant to be a, a government of the people in that sense, um.
I'm not surprised though, because Cobb has a lot of local or community people that are involved in various efforts, like there's an Osteo Community Task, Task Force of Mableton.
And you have East Cobb, they love that kind of stuff, all those soccer moms.
I actually think it's a pretty engaged county, period.
Yes.
Was that the first time it's ever been done? Was that the first time?
Yeah, this is the first cabinet, it's the first cabinet, the thing is, is there's still gaps. There are some very active people, but it's a revolving door, very active people, even with our board appointments, you know, we're, we're trying to get five hundred applicants in. Uh, we're about two hundred right now, so that's really exciting, but it's just to reach different people, so that there can be different representation.
Okay.
Um.
I know that's always a challenge, I, I worked for Fulton County for a very brief amount of time, and we had to do, well, something kind of similar, but at least, there's all these official neighborhood planning zones, and then there's everything else, and so trying to be, trying to synchronize is, is, is really, really important. It's not easy, but it's very important, but there's definitely always a revolving door.
At least you have East Cobb, like, I, East Cobb is like, I'm sorry, it just seems like, like a lot of, I've been through it. It's like a lot of soccer moms, and you have their little communities, and it's just so cutesy, like, I can see them be like, yeah, you know, hey, woo. Like, I can see them be like, yeah, you know, hey, we'll, we'll get involved, you know, I thought drop my kids off at school, I have a little free time. I, it's, it's, it's cute, I digress.
It, like I said, it's, it's a lot of, it's about making sure that we're building those bridges as well, because it's very partisan right now.
Yeah, very.
It's very partisan. Um, and so, and, and, and the, the information that, that they're receiving, there's reason why there's animosity and fear and stuff, which is why I talk about fear and uncertainty, cause it's, it's a recurring theme.
Yeah.
But the only way to get around it is when people come together, express love and hope. And so that is why we do everything that we do the way that we do it, and yeah.
Would you say that there's a big education divide as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, but on multiple, on different levels, on different levels. Um, and, and it really depends, cause there are programs inside of some of the jurisdictions. Uh, but I will say, just at a high level, the relationship between the county commission and the Board of Education also needed mending. And so, yeah, I served on the SPOS committee for the Board of Education, so I got a chance to see. So SPOS is the special tax that's collected in order to pay for special projects. So I mentioned how our budget is really small. Relatively speaking, it's not small if you had it personally, obviously, but.
Special project local option.
Sales tax.
Thank you.
You got it.
But, okay, but that's good, that's good information to know, because I, I know that from an educational perspective, and I worked with some of the tech, tech executives in the city of Atlanta, um, and they all, all have their kids in East Cobb. All their kids go to, seem to go to school in East Cobb. Everyone goes, you know, even though they lived in Fulton County, everybody's kids went to school in East Cobb, it seemed like.
Cobb is, is, that's just, Cobb is, is just, where it's at, like, if you, the creme de la creme is Cobb, I, I, Cobb and Alpharetta. Like, those are the two places that most people. I wouldn't either. It's, it's nice, but it's, it's like country to me, like, you drive it, it's like in a whole other world.
There's only one highway to get there.
Literally, I'm just like, I don't, but I digress.
But this is, okay, this is good to know. So we don't have that much time left, I wanna ask you about crime. Can I ask you about crime?
I mean, she touches everything though, like, so it's, it's kind of hard to get her in one space.
Do you think there's a crime issue? I wanna know if there's.
And compared to every place else?
Not compare, period. For our standard of living.
In general, there are, obviously, and crime is relative, right? If you're not used to certain criminal activities, any amount of crime.
No, 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 that is a great point. That is a great point, because there were, there were, no, I'm so glad you said it that way. There was fireworks on Christmas. That very much upset a lot of people in my neighborhood community, in my subdivision. And the ordinance says that by ten PM, the fireworks are supposed to be shut down unless it is New Year's, in which case they can go until midnight. And we were watching those clocks, and that is crime.
Oh, my god.
But it's a good point, crime is relative, you're right.
You, you really thought that was, oh my god. But what I expect, your house, y'all houses are like this, in your neighborhood, so I, y'all like right beside each other, literally. Like, it's.
What's that have to do with fireworks?
Because if y'all were spaced out more, you probably wouldn't hear, it wouldn't be as bad, but literally when somebody lights a firework, it's right in your yard.
This was in some other community, and we could hear them, and that was way before and way after the ordinance allows for fireworks to be just, you know.
Oh, my god, you sound like one of those soccer moms.
Fireworks have not been legal for forever.
Oh, my god, I cannot believe that Becky shot fireworks at two o'clock in the morning.
Tell some of, some of my constituents, some issues can be solved over cookies.
Yes!
And it makes things better.
That's true. Christmas, you know you love Christmas cookies, so you could have solved that with some Christmas cookies.
It makes things a little bit better, and it costs a lot less, so that our officers can tend to.
Real matters, that's true.
You see the ridiculousness that I have to deal with? This is the ridiculousness I have to deal with.
It's still real, it's just, uh, so, so the love and, and, and whatnot, I don't mean that as lip service. I mean it seriously. When you, when people know their neighbors, I'm, I'm gonna show you a stat- there's a statistic that the crime in an area is directly proportional to the number of bowling leagues. And that's an old statistic. But that was because in an area with a lot of bowling leagues, the people knew each other, they knew their neighbors, they talked to them.
Yeah, they didn't call the police.
I get it, but bowling league.
That's a good point.
Like, the people that knew their neighbors, like, in my day, you knew your neighbors.
Forget it though, are you? That's a good point. That's a very good point.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, well, that's, yeah, I probably won't. Yeah, I probably won't.
It's the point.
Yeah, fine, I, I get it, I can get there. Cam, you got it, cause we almost out of town. Any questions you wanna ask, uh, cause you're supposed to be making an impression on her, so.
Well, I mean, the only question I kind of, that's been lingering back in my mind, is kind of like, how do you prioritize the agendas of like the liaisons that, you know, advocate for their specific communities? Like, what, what are you doing as far as like prioritizing, you know, those constituents and like?
So, so when it comes to the pet, I call them pet projects, properly engaged some things or something, I don't remember. But the point is, they're pet, my pet projects. Um, the prioritization is up to the community, to the cabinet. We discussed that, and we're just starting, so we're going through that first round. I'm sure we'll modify how we do that prioritization. But I'm always a fan of increasing ba- uh, of increasing bandwidth. I don't, I believe in shared power. I think, you know, if, um, if I'm, if everything is dependent on me to get something done, that's a bottleneck. Right? But if we are able to delegate, if we're able to recruit, if we're able to get more people involved, well, first of all, you're gonna have better outcome. Because you're actually gonna consider things you probably don't know, cause, I mean, I can tell you, I haven't lived everybody's life, I haven't lived in every neighborhood. I haven't worked every job.
So a part of that prioritizing, does that include like a vote? Because I remember you mentioning that some things don't really, you know, require a vote. Some things don't really require an election, so like, when, you know, when you're having these meetings with these liaisons, is it, and is up to the constituents? Like, does this require an election or some type of vote for them to prioritize?
We just, it's an internal meeting. Like, say for instance, you guys are my cabinet, you, you come up with idea eight, right?
I would.
You like trolleys, right? You, you, you think fireworks, you, you think fireworks need smaller.
And I'm for the cookies, I guess, that's my.
And so what we would do is we would discuss, and, and you would give feedback, and you would say, well, I think this, and you would say, well, I think that. And then we'd say, okay, so what's the initiative? What's the proposed initiative? And we put that, everybody's gonna discuss the proposed initiative. And.
It feels like a general consensus type thing.
Right, and we'll say, okay, so are we gonna turn this into an active initiative, or are we gonna kill it? And all the eyes have it, great, it gets added to the list. Who's, who's responsible? Okay, you said you're gonna sign up, you said you're gonna sign up. So now we're gonna hold you accountable to whatever plan you've put together.
That's good.
In the, in the project.
It's also good for people to be able to speak to it, like, it takes, it creates a level of transparency, cause decisions aren't all being made by like one person. And a lot of those people are elected officials, and they've got other things to do, and so you just kind of feel like, you know, I think it's, like you said, shared power is helpful for that reason too. It even creates more trust from an external perspective.
All right, so in our, in our final minutes, uh, what do you wanna leave with the people? Especially the people that are in Cobb, now that you're their leader. Like, what, what do you wanna leave with the people? What's final thoughts? Yeah, that's like.
I shouldn't say, you know, we're, we're doing, we're working overtime to figure out what are the best ways to engage with different groups of people. Don't be afraid to, to talk to us, to reach out. Um, I mean, I have an open Calumley link, where if you wanna meet with me, you just click the link and book a time.
I love Calumley, I know it a great.
You two are such nerds.
You can meet me for fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, one hour, whatever. We have a Slack room, big community chatroom, where if you just wanna.
You're doing the app Slack?
The app Slack. You just hop on into the community room.
I hate it, like, we had it, I'll be next, I hate it, like.
You hated the people, you hated the people you were using Slack with, cause Slack is awesome. You hate the people you were using Slack with.
You're right, you're very true, okay, I'll, I'll scratch that, you were very right about that, very right.
And then, you know, over, every, during the campaign, we did Saturday huddles, which was just open to the community, you hop into the Zoom room, and we talk about whatever you wanna talk about. So we're, we're reinstating them a little bit differently, where we're introducing each of the cabinet members. So if you have a particular issue or concern, or you wanna know more about that space, hop in. And, um, and we have a tour that we kicked off as well, so if you wanna invite me to your organization, or group, or HOA, or association to come and go over the fourteen priorities for twenty-one, and tell me what you don't like, and add something you want, you can book me for a tour stop as well.
How do they get in touch with you?
You can email me at jerica dot Richardson at CobbCounty.org, or give me a text at five zero four eight five eight seven seven two eight.
Awesome.
All right, so there you have it, Commissioner Jerika Richardson.
Thank you.
I have a whole new respect for what you do. I don't know why you signed up for that, uh, cause you know, I, I plan on running for office at some point, but it won't be that one. Like, after today, it will not be that one. Uh, but kudos to you for, for taking it on. Uh, Cam, any final thoughts, since this is your first day?
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, excited to see what the dynamic of the, you know, the show is like and everything like this, so it's really exciting, I'm kind of like, I don't know, like nervous.
You're fine, you're fine. This has been an awesome conversation.
Fine, actually, you got us lucky, cause we really didn't get to get into current events like we do, but next week, we probably will. Um, Simone, final thoughts?
Uh, no, I hope this gives everyone a really good appreciation for public service. It's, it's very important work, it's, uh, challenging work, and it's not entertaining. No, no disrespect, but it's not, it's not for reality TV. It's real work, it is.
It's a lot of shade you throwing.
No, it's, it's just very serious, and this is the kind of stuff that I like and that I appreciate, and why I feel like great public servants are not necessarily great reality TV stars. So, just a testament, just a testament.
You don't think that was shade? But okay, well, I digress. All right, so, uh, you know, special thanks to our guest again, Mrs. Jerika Richardson. Commissioner Jerika Richardson, we will be seeing you on the front lines, and you definitely have to come back again. All right, everybody, so we will see you guys next Friday, same time, same place, on the Leadership Blame with your host, Ricardo D. Rice.
I think we're good, yeah.
That was awesome. All right.
Okay.
I will definitely be in touch with you.
You threw a lot of shade on that, that ending, I don't know what, ma'am, I don't know what that was about, but you threw a lot of shade on that la- on that ending.[1770.18]